All right, would you all please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, to clarity and justice for all. Edna, did you do the pledge on your own?
I did.
All right, perfect. We heard you.
And you can't, wait Frank, you can't see what I'm wearing here, can you?
All right, so, all right, we're gonna start the meeting now, Mr. Lapelis.
Did you get the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? All right, this evening, it's January-
Can we be seated now?
All right, listen, I can't see you to reprimand you, so.
This is a bad idea, bad idea.
It's Monday, January 14, 2019, this is the regular, uh, regularly scheduled town council meeting, uh, for a roll call, we have physically present Mr. Rooney, Mr. Reed, Mr. O'Rourke, myself, Mr. Lito, Ms. Martin, and Mr. Mauer, and via our amazing technology teleconference, we have Ms. Lapelis, correct?
Correct.
And you can hear us?
Yep, I sure can.
We can certainly hear you, and Mr. Condon, also joining us via telephone, correct? You can hear, okay, good. If you have any issues with hearing anything that anybody's saying, just please chime in and we'll do our best to make sure that you can hear it so that you can participate fully, okay?
Thank you.
All right, uh, we're going to move on to the consent calendar, A through L, are there any comments or objections regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none?
No.
Okay, seeing none and hearing none, I will pass the consent calendar. We have communications A through T, and thankfully I don't have to read all of them any longer, uh, unless there's an objection or a comment. Seeing none and hearing none, I would ask that those, um, be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting, our agenda. Public participation, would any members of the public wish to participate? Mr. Kirsch has his hand raised, if you'd come forward and, despite us knowing who you are, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Steve Kirsch, 35 Applegate Lane. Um, I'd like to address an item on your agenda for tonight, the proposal to change the budget adoption date. Just a couple of comments about history, I'm not necessarily saying you shouldn't do it, um, but one of the reasons, and I'm not sure how many people remember, that we went to an April date when the, when the charter was changed, was so that we could get through a number of referendum and still have time for the Board of Education to offer contracts to teachers. That was a big problem back in the day when we started voting in May and ran, you know, into June or whatever, they could not extend contracts to prospective teachers, and we were losing teachers, even those that had gone through our system and been trained. And so I, again, I just point that out and hope that somebody will, you know, make sure that's no longer an issue. As to some of the other things, um, I understand you might have better input, but on the other hand, if the, the state is not getting a budget done till August, then moving this out 30 days doesn't help you a whole lot. There was also an issue in the day with absentee ballots and the time between referendums, so, again, even though I think the, the town clerk and whatnot have been talked to, um, I want to make sure that that, there's plenty of time and that doesn't impact any of the citizens. Also, I'm concerned now, just in general, we no longer have a, a town newspaper, and I think the council needs, regardless of whether these dates are, are changed or not, to have a really good plan for communicating to the public, to let them know what the budget are, to let them know what the dates are, um, and I hope you will, um, you'll hopefully take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation, Mr. Kirsch. Anybody else wish to participate at this time? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the first public participation session. We have a number of appointments, A through H, the first one-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt, before we continue, I, I, I'm sorry, I failed to tell you part of the meeting, I meant to. Item B under appointments, Ms. Lampley, um, she contacted my office earlier today asking that she respectfully withdraw her name from consideration due to work commitments.
Okay. All right, so, back to appointments, A, we have, the first one is Mr. Lee Hostler, 272 Stanley Road, to the First Electman's Business and Industry Advisory Committee, and that would be Mr. Kellogg.
Yes, so I'd ask the council approve my appointment of Mr. Hostler to, uh, as you know, uh, Mr. Giovanni, who's already on that committee, assumed, uh, he was Chair of the Economic Development Committee Commission, assumed the seat that was designated for the Chair of the EDC, which left an opening on the chamber, uh, so I think Mr. Hostler has certainly been very engaged and a huge asset to our community, will certainly represent not just the chamber, but our, our community very well on this committee.
Okay, so, let's say introduction, it's kind of an odd appointment, so I'll ask that, uh, someone make a motion.
I'd like to second Frank. Don't move.
Okay, hold, hold on. Let me, let me ask for a motion first, so may I have a motion to appoint Lee Hostler, U of 272 Stanley Road, to the First Electman's Business and Industry Advisory Committee representing, uh, the Monroe Chamber of Commerce?
Don't move.
Motion by-
Don't move.
I'd like to make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Mauer, would any individuals on the phone like to second that motion?
I wouldn't dare.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I wouldn't bother.
Seconded by Mr. Condon. Discussion, we had a thorough explanation from our First Electman, but the floor is open for further discussion. Mr. Mauer.
On one point, I'd just like to say Mr. Hostler has been an extremely dedicated member of this community, and I think he'll be an excellent addition to this, uh, committee. I do have one question, uh, just, I know most of our commissioning committees, there's a part of the motion as to, to fill a vacancy by and with a term ending, is there no term ending for this specific appointment?
Correct, there are no terms on this committee, um, that was part of the, my original resolution regarding that, so it's basically, um, it's an open committee.
Just wanted to make sure we were covering our bases. Um, other than that, I believe, like I said, he'll be an excellent addition, so.
Anybody else?
And Mr. Lito, Mr. Lito, I would agree with that, Lee has done everything he possibly can from Monroe, you know, from the Stephanie Green all the way, so, uh, I'd certainly second it.
That's Ms. Lapelis for the record, thank you, Ms. Lapelis, would anybody else like to make a comment?
Frank, and Mr. Lito, I'd like to add, if you don't mind?
Yes, Mr. Condon.
I've worked with Mr. Hostler for, you know, numerous years at State of Stephanie and, you know, for many tree lighting, I could not endorse a better person who's more involved in the town than Lee, he's really done an outstanding job.
Would anybody else like to shower Mr. Hostler with compliments?
I would, I think he's a heck of a nice guy, I live around the corner from him, he waves at me when I go by, and I really appreciate that, he's great at anything he does.
We have a light meeting this evening, uh, we'll call for a vote, all of those in favor by show of hand, and on the phone, please, yea?
Aye.
Yea.
Okay, and anybody against would be a nay or a raise of hand. All right, hearing none, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, this is a difficult job for me this evening, eight to zero, motion carries. I feel like there's like a camera in the room, it's like some kind of comedy show or something. All right, Carrie Lampley has withdrawn as per, uh, Mr. Kellogg, so we'll move on to C, which is Doris Wills, W-I-L-L-S, not Willis, uh, Republican, 35 Old Newtown Road, to the Housing Authority, Mr. Rooney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Doris Wills of 35 Newtown Road to the Housing Authority for a term ending October 31st, 2019, to fill the vacancy created by Robert Tranzillo.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin.
I'll second it.
And, Mr. Rooney, uh, discussion.
Doris Wills has lived in Monroe for 47 years, she's a retired LPN, Ms. Wills has spent time working with the residents of Fairway Acres in Monroe, believes her relationship with them gives her unique experience which will serve as an asset to the Housing Authority. Once again, this appointment fills the vacancy created by Robert Tranzillo.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, any further, uh, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, raise of hands or-
Yea.
Aye.
And against, hands or nay? All right, seeing none and hearing none, the motion carries, eight to zero. D is Frank Duches, Republican, to Parks and Recreation, Mr. Rooney.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Frank Duches of 15 Hearthstone Road to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term ending October 21st, 2019, and fill the vacancy created by Brian Purdy.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Lapelis, discussion, Mr. Rooney.
Frank Duches has lived in Monroe with his family for 29 years, he has years of experience as an AYSO Commissioner, Mr. Duches also serves as Monroe Soccer Club Coach on the Executive Board and on the Review Committee as well. He has further experience as manager-coach of Little League teams, Mr. Duches is looking forward to be an integral part of the Parks and Recreation Commission. This appointment, once again, fills the vacancy created by the late Brian Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, uh, any further discussion?
I'd like to comment, he is my neighbor and, as opposed to with Terry, he waves at me, not when I go by, so, no, I really, I, I, he's a great, integral part of the community.
All right, that was Mr. Condon for the record, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote, show, all those in favor, show of hands, are aye?
Aye.
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 And against, hands or nay? Hearing none and seeing none against, motion carries, eight to zero. Moving on to E, Donna Lynn Wales, Republican, to the Library Board, Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Donna Lynn Wales of 205 Old Newtown Road to the Library Board for a term ending November 30th, 2019.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Ms. Lapelis, discussion, Mr. Rooney.
Donna Lynn Wales has lived in Monroe for 60 years, she's an active member of the community with professional work experience in the pharmaceutical industry. Ms. Wales has volunteered in the planning and organization of our Memorial Day Parade, she has recently served on the Conservation and Water Resources Commission. Mrs. Wales believes the Library Board is a perfect fit for her, this appointment fills the vacancy created by Gary Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, motion by, uh, discussion by Mr. Rooney, thank you, any further discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, show of hands or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And against, all right, hearing and seeing none, motion carries, eight to zero. Moving on to F, Deborah Heim, to the position of tax collector, um, Mr. Rooney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, as some of us know, Manny has, um, will be resigning, and before we make this appointment, I'd like to, before you, Mr. Selectman, if you have anything to say-
Well, let's just have the motion.
Just do the motion first, okay, great, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Uh, okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Deborah Heim of 111 Turkey Russe Road to the position of tax collector for a term ending November 25th, 2019.
Okay, motion by Mr. Rooney.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Lapelis, for discussion, uh, Mr. Rooney, uh, back to you since your motion, but if you want to turn it forward, Mr. Kellogg, feel free to do it.
I'll finish the motion, and I guess we'll do it that way.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Deb has served the town of Monroe on many boards of commission, Deb has held elected officer in Monroe for many years, her extensive experience as a tax collector for the town of Stratford makes her the perfect candidate for tax collector, uh, she fills the position, uh, left behind by Manny Camber.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Rooney, for further discussion, Mr. Kellogg, would you like to say something?
Uh, well, I guess I was gonna mention, uh, during my, my update, but I could say a couple of words, uh, now would be just as fine. Uh, I think, um, you know, the, the town has certainly lost, uh, a, a dedicated public servant in the tax collector, uh, of Manny Camber. Uh, he submitted his resignation, uh, to me, um, earlier this month, uh, and, uh, I think I, it should, it is included in your, in your package, so, we are looking to, uh, fill a vacancy that would be anticipated, um, anytime after February 2nd. Manny served on the Board of Finance prior to this for many years, including four years as his chairman, he was tax collector, uh, for, uh, over 18 years, uh, consistently had high collection rates, met lots of, uh, high targets set for by the Board of Finance, uh, he's, uh, always in the office regardless of the time of day or the day of the week, um, we certainly thank him for his service, I would, I wanna also just make note, quite coincidentally, uh, Mr. Camber has also taken ill, um, he's actually in the hospital as we speak with pneumonia, so, I would like us, uh, council to offer our prayers out to him, and, uh, certainly our best to his fam, to Fran and his family as well, because they're going through a tough time right now. Uh, but certainly, um, what, you know, we're looking to do in, is ensure that we have a seamless transition in that office, it's a critical role, and, uh, I thank the council for their consideration in, uh, filling the seat upon Manny's retirement.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kellogg, any further discussion? Um, I'll, I'll just say, I served with, uh, Ms. Heim on, on this council and other functions, uh, in town, and, um, you know, I can, I can say that I don't think there could be a better candidate for this, uh, position based upon not only her experience, but, um, uh, how well, uh, she is respected, uh, in a bipartisan fashion in this community, uh, having lived here for many, many years, I've lived here many years, but she's, uh, outdoes me, and, uh, Ms. Heim always has, uh, been very diligent and, uh, attacked, um, her duties here, uh, in town, um, with, uh, you know, extreme vigilance, so, uh, I think it's a, it's a great appointment, and, um, excited that, uh, we can expect the community to enjoy what is likely to be a very seamless, uh, transition, not only from seeing a recognizable face in the office, which I think is important, but also having just, uh, a, a, uh, just impressive resume, having experienced a slot right in and do that, I think we're just lucky to have someone like Ms. Heim, so, uh, thank you for your consideration, Ms. Heim, and, uh, I look forward to having you, uh, serve the community hopefully for many years to come.
And I would also add that her, uh, her role as treasurer of the town certainly just adds that much more credibility to the, uh, collection position that she's gonna receive.
Anybody else? I just want to be clear on the motion, um, Mr. Camber, so we're all clear, Mr. Camber has submitted, uh, his letter of resignation, which is in the packet, it does indicate his last full day in office is Saturday, February 2nd, 2019, um, so, Mr. Kellogg, just for clarity, I want to, uh, uh, understand that, uh, the appointment of Ms. Heim will officially commence on February the 4th, which would be the first day, or do we want to leave that gap of a day, or should we say February the 3rd? I, I know it's a Sunday, but if she's able to fill her duties and if, you know, services were needed on a Sunday, uh-
Sure, sure.
So, I, I don't know what your thought was.
It's certainly fine with me, the only, uh, consideration would have to be her being sworn into office, but that can, you know, I can do that on a Sunday.
I just want to make sure that we're in line with the expectations, uh, if this is the fourth-
Yeah, I don't, I don't, my, I think the likelihood of us having to deal with something on, on Sunday is unlikely, I'll, you know, I, I defer to- My past conversation with Deb, she was comfortable with Monday the 4th.
Monday the 4th, okay, all right. Are we comfortable with the motion as it's presented, that it's effective Monday the 4th?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else comfortable with that? Yes, okay.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? So, the motion before council is to appoint, uh, Ms. Heim to the position of tax collector to fill the vacancy by Mr. Camber, which is, it's a, it's a conditional prospective, uh, approval, uh, appointment to commence on February 4th, 2019. All right, any further discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor, show of hands or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And against, all right, hearing none and seeing no objections, uh, that motion carries, eight to zero. Moving on to item G is, uh, Mr. Patrick O'Hara to the position of treasurer, Mr. Rooney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Patrick O'Hara of 282 Shelton Road, excuse me, to the position of treasurer for a term ending November 25th, 2019.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Lapelis, Mr. Rooney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Patrick has served the town of Monroe on the Planning and Zoning Commission, Town Council, Monroe Board of Education, and most recently Monroe Board of Finance. He believes his many years of experience along with his recent experience on Board of Finance makes him a qualified candidate for town treasurer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rooney, any, uh, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mauer?
Uh, just one question as to the effect that this will take considering the, uh, I, I would make the assumption that, uh, Ms. Heim would be stepping down effective February 3rd, um, 2019, from the role of treasurer, and then Mr. O'Hare would be taking over effective February 4th, or is there a different plan for that?
Do we have a resignation from Ms. Heim from treasurer as of, yet?
Uh, no, then, it would be, uh, obviously upon her, uh, appointment as tax collector, we would immediately be expecting her resignation as town treasurer, because those two positions are not, uh, certainly-
But there's nothing concluding her from resigning tomorrow, she wanted to, to commence, so, I guess the question is, is your plan to, I guess it's Ms. Heim's plan, and she's here, but is there a plan to have a resignation, immediately have Mr. O'Hare take over, or as, as Mr. Mauer pointed out, is it continued?
The intention, the intention was for her to submit a resignation effective commiser with her taking the new role on February 3rd.
Okay, all right, so-
And then Mr. O'Hare would assume that position on February 4th.
All right, so the appointment is, uh, conditioned upon receipt of her resignation, is that fair?
Uh, it is, but it raises the question of, are we against charter in, uh, considering this before there has actually been a tendered resignation? I doubt it.
If I could have, uh, Chairman Hayden for the record, Town Attorney, if I could have a couple of minutes, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, and respond to the-
Sure, please, Mr. Rooney, sure.
Thank you, Chairman.
Do you need a few minutes to research it, or, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Confirm.
All right, let's, um, just take a couple, two-minute recess, please, and, uh, we'll just take a two-minute recess, let Mr. Hayden do his research, and we'll reconvene, uh, literally in two minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't her verbal accepting of the role de facto do a resignation for her existing role?
Let, let's just take a two-minute recess, and we'll hear Attorney Hayden's opinion, and then we'll reconvene, okay? Stand alone.
Thank you.
Careful what you say, because we can hear you.
I'm not saying anything.
I want confirmation from Lee whether he's waving goodbye to Terry or hello to Terry.
It's, it's really hard, it's the town council where we have the duty to appoint.
But you have a resignation tender.
Or it's, it's a conditional, it's a conditional appointment.
My son just goes to play with Eric, and I pounded officials, and he just said that I can't, I feel something tear him apart, I can't open this, you want to get this right? Interesting.
Where is Nate?
Might have pulled a run. I said- I mean, you could have pulled a run.
Yeah.
I said- Just a nagging in the- Doing me some crazy. Because this is, it's powerful, of course, when it comes from where you think so. That's why I got him. Team effort, but I like things to go. It bothers me. You know me long enough.
Yes, true.
Yeah, it's good to see the lesbianness, like, and I'm, this is, yeah.
I actually think you're right in the other step, in that it's not any resignation, it's any vacancy, it's more vacancy.
Right.
I have the cross of people not really-
I think it's, I think it's- I, I, I-
We're just gonna have to have a special, I mean, that's what we want to do.
Or she should mention to do it at the next meeting.
We could do that too, and I, I just want everybody to be okay with it.
Want to see that?
Yes. Section 5, or 7.
I already spent days doing this. I don't disagree. What do you mean? We're still on recess, I was just- Does this want to be?
It's, it's one of those things that, you know, it might happen.
Yeah, but if the question becomes, is it-
I think, I think both is arguing as to the resignation, that there's a conditional vacancy, and therefore, but without a resignation is not-
Do you still comfortable that it's a prospective vacancy?
That, that I agree with, I think that I do agree, because it's conditional, right, it's gray, but it's- But it's gray, but here is black and white, what we have right now.
You're right, but, but let's go back to that.
This is conditional, yeah.
I took the position, I took right out, I was, I just don't like making the into this body.
I agree. I, I agree with the prospective vacancy, I agree with the idea of the conditional vacancy with a prospective vacancy, I at least think that gives-
Very, very good shape. I'm trying to- So, we're doing, uh, two-day meeting, so we're tired. So, we're booked.
Okay, so, I put back up now, you should have deposited.
So, if I didn't plan to come around, I should have. The impact, that's why. Something, I mean, decent. One brother, and then the left.
Alright, you ready?
I'm ready.
Hold on, stop for a second. That's the benefit of being here, you don't have to make that appearance. Alright, we ready, we're back on the record?
Okay.
Alright, we recessed, Ms. Lepellos and Mr. Condon, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
We recessed, as you may recall, to have Mr. Hayden, our town attorney, do some fast research, I think he's ready for, to address the council, so Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I did, I just want to check and make sure that my understanding and my reading of, my recollection of what the charter refers to as a vacancy fits the circumstances that we have here and I, I do not believe that we have a vacancy until we have the effective resignation of the tax collector. So, I believe if the, if her desire is to wait until February, whatever date that was, to do that, as of that date, that the vacancy would become effective of that date, and we would.
Just so the record's clear, the tax collector, Mr. Canberra, has submitted his resignation prospectively till February 3rd. The office we're talking about is the treasurer where Ms. Heim, who's filling the tax collector, has not resigned, but I do believe that if that's your legal opinion, I do believe Mr. Kellogg is now in possession of a resignation for Ms. Heim, is that correct, Mr. Kellogg?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a resignation from Deb Heim as town treasurer effective February 3rd, 2019.
Okay, so is it your opinion, Mr. Hayden, that the charter is referencing to an appointment by this body to an elected position upon the vacancy of that office, that those resignations, albeit prospective resignations, still serve as technically a vacancy, which gives us the authority to make an appointment?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any, thank you, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion regarding this appointment, for the record, which is an appointment of Mr. O'Hara to the town treasurer position effective February 4th, 2019, which is commensurate with Ms. Heim's resignation and assumption of office, of the office of the tax collector. Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor, show of hands, or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against, alright, seeing and hearing none, that motion passes, eight to zero. Just for a moment, I was remiss, I want to go back to item F, and.
You saw Jen's not gonna.
Yeah, but I think Dennis and Enid are, so.
That's what it is now, we're just calling in votes.
Praise the world, man.
Why not? What do you got to be as a legislative body for, just do it over, it's Facebook. Right, right? You showing a mean face? Let him die.
Hang it in there.
I think it's gonna do that so somebody else calls in, which is annoying.
Not sustainable.
No, 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 no.
Short term, maybe, but not sustainable.
I, I saw the letter from Manny.
Yeah.
I was, I was like, I was reading, I was like.
Trying to.
What?
See how to relax all the worship they're allowed with the MRCC.
Well. January collections, but like.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
From work. What the, what is it, why are they sending you a vote? Uh, yeah, the last four years of my life.
Hi, Lee, how are you? Where did all my stuff go? Oh, Kevin, you're in my chair, aren't you? Am I confused here? What the hell is going on?
You're in Dennis's seat.
Yeah. Kevin. Kevin. Right, Kevin.
Then we need to cross them out. It's not even in this.
It's not, it's not. What are you, what are you two talking about, what's going on? You, what about you?
He's mad because, uh.
Yeah. Well, where's, where's my stuff? Well, I just moved, there was a seat, there was a seat behind us, so I just went to seat two, it's seat three. Well, when you take this, where's my stuff? I don't know, but this is my stuff, I brought it. It doesn't matter if you brought it. It doesn't matter if I brought it, or if I brought it, I brought it for myself, however you may share. Or, or if I brought it. Or if I brought it, I brought it for myself.
This is sounding like an avid custodian.
What? Yeah, except for, nobody's on first. What? For a second, would you like your phone, or did you bring this for me? I, I, please, take it. By all means, I will, I will take selfies. Would you prefer them above or below the desk? Oh, alright, then.
I feel, I feel.
I didn't realize we were in this place. Well, you will feel very empowered. What's that? Which was? What was the first thing I texted you? I don't remember, man, some days there's a lot. Lately, there hasn't been much.
All day.
Dude, it was so bad today. It was so bad today. And now I'm just like, I've got this shuffle paper, I can't make that.
Well, thank you.
Do we have, uh? Oh, there they are. I mean, let's, let's.
So maybe, uh.
I mean, wait.
That's probably what it was, I'm sure that's all it was, yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to defer you to tell about Ms.'s resignation?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because when we go through this, we're gonna get. Well, it's an appointment, so, you know, Deb Heim, so. It is, that's Willis, yes, Willis. We, we set down as well as I suppose it would technically, so we'll talk, I thank you. She is, she's great, could you find Carrie Lam, please? I'm like, wow.
Her appointment was.
Jen is not here. I've been private for 20 years, I see her at the gym every day. Oh, Frank's not gonna be here either?
Is he in LNA?
Yeah, I know she's, she was there. Late this afternoon.
Happy New Year, everybody. Hey, Jason. Happy New Year, man.
How you doing, doing nice?
Good, living the dream.
Thank you, thank you, dear.
Okay, well, we all sat from LNA, good?
All set, everything.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Uh, yeah, I did, I came back to see you. As you may know from serving on council, we have the authority, only council has the authority to to adjust the salaries of elected officials and that can only be done at certain periods of time throughout the year, one of which can be done, I had our town attorney, I should have had this, I should have had you stay up there, Mr. Hayden, you don't have to, you don't have to come back just now unless you want to, but Attorney Hayden did do some research for me and did opine that the salaries of elected officials can also be adjusted upon their appointment by this body filling a vacancy, so, Mr. Hayden, would you, actually, would you come forward and just tell us your, your opinion on that so that we can address those at this time and why it has to be done now and when it could be done prospectively if not now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the charter precludes the modification, the modification of any salary of any office during the term of the office. The policy behind that being, of elected officials, the policy behind that being that, that the effect could be of, of a, an elected official being, being rewarded for particular conduct or for, for falling in line, for example, historically. So, the state constitution and a clarifying amendment in 1982 clarified the preclusion against modifying any salary of any elected official during the term. However, there have been, there have been several cases, between six, six and eight cases in the last 50 years or so, that, that the Connecticut Supreme Court has held that that modifying the, the payment of, for replacement, for example, under these circumstances, a retiree is permissible because there's no, there's no chance of, no risk of, of, of any reward if it's segregated by individual. So, my, my conclusion, my legal conclusion is that, again, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, this council does have the authority upon the changing of filling a vacancy of an elected term during the term, the council can set the salary and the compensation.
Okay, and so I'm clear, are we required to establish the salary upon the filling of the vacancy? Must this body establish a salary, and if we do not establish a salary, does it revert to the salary that had already been approved in that prior fiscal budget? That's the second part of the question, the third part of the question is, I think you answered it already, but we would not be able to consider an adjustment to this salary during our most imminent budget deliberations, correct?
If I understand your question, Mr. Chairman, if you set, if you set the salary now for the.
Do we have to set the salary now?
Yes.
Okay, one way or the other, we do.
Yes.
Okay, alright, and do we have to set that salary as a condition of the appointment? Within the same motion, or can it be by a, another motion or resolution of this body, is there, is there anything that?
I didn't come across any specific authority discerning either way, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to look into that and refine my research a little bit.
Alright, so I think what we're gonna do is I'm gonna ask that we, so the two paid positions are the treasurer and the tax collector, correct? So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask for a motion to amend our agenda to add F and G, F being this council's establishment of a salary for the tax collector position commensurate with Ms. Heim's service and G, the appointment or the establishment of a salary or stipend, whatever we call in our budget, for the treasurer position upon Mr. O'Hara commencing that service, so.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lepellos, is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Mauer, any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, show of hands, or aye?
Aye.
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 And against? Mr. Rooney, you're in favor, I missed you.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries eight to zero, so F will be tax collector salary, G will be treasurer salary, stipend, compensation, alright? Uh, thank you, Mr. Hayden, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Condon?
Is there, is, I'm just going, I think I'm going back a little bit, I apologize, with the appointment of Patrick O'Hara, does have to step down from board of finance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, was that mentioned and I missed it?
That has not, was not mentioned, but we do expect there to be a resignation as a condition precedent to, to his service in that office.
Thank you.
H. What's that? Yes, board of finance, a lot of shuffling going on here. H, Rebecca O'Donnell to the board of finance, Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rebecca O'Donnell of 91 Walnut Street to the board of finance for a term ending November 25th, 2019.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Mauer, discussion by Mr. Rooney.
Rebecca and her family have lived in Monroe for past 16 years, Rebecca is a director of Allite Solutions and serves as procure-to-pay leader in the professional services business. She has over 15 years of leadership and management experience in procurement, sourcing, supply chain, and related functional areas. She has secured record achievements in cost reduction, process improvement, and strategic partnerships. Rebecca recently automated the sourcing and by-processes across her team to prepare her business for a firm-wide migration to an improved ERP platform. Rebecca's extensive experience makes her an ideal candidate for the board of finance, and I have received a resignation letter from her.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rooney, any further discussion? Alright, seeing none and hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, show of hands, or aye?
Aye.
And against, seeing and hearing no, party against, that motion carries eight to zero.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With your indulgence, uh, Ms. O'Donnell is on the other side. If you'd like to just walk in.
Please. Ms. O'Donnell, if you'd come forward. Want to breathe?
Nice work.
I like that word.
Are you ready?
Strong.
Do solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you faithfully discharge according to law and duties as a member of the Board of Finance. That's your goal, please. So help your God, it might not be appropriate. Congratulations.
Mr. Rooney, Ms. O'Donnell serves on what Board or commission at the present moment?
She was on, uh... Becky, which, uh, which commission were you on? I'm sorry.
Historic.
Historic. Thank you.
There you go. Our clerk is on the ball. Thank you for that question. All right. Congratulations. Welcome. Thank you for your service. All right. We're gonna move on to action items. A is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. Mr. Rooney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have not met, but we do have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday. Wednesday. Wednesday. Yeah. We have the dates confused. But it's Wednesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, B is the Planning and Zoning Public Works and Park and Recreation Subcommittee. Ms. Lapelis?
Uh, Park and Rec has not met. Their meeting's February fourth. And, um, Planning and Zoning announced that the Town of Monroe had received the DEP grant for planning and design of the Maple Street section of the Usatonic Rails to Trails. And they had a discussion at the last P and Z meeting about, uh, Cumberland Farms, the, the gas station, gasoline station taking over the Prusko property. And there was a heated discussion because the, uh, back, the feet, the existing three hundred and fifty feet is only a hundred feet. So that, there was no decision. They'll be discussing at their next meeting. And Planning and Zoning is meeting actually this Thursday. That's it for me.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Mr. Kellag?
I made footnotes that, um, at the P and Z Commission, the commissioners did direct, uh, staff to draft a decline of the proposed zoning amendment that would reduce the setback from, uh, to one hundred feet for a gas station in the LOR zone. So my understanding is that, that's the direction that that piece is taken. Just, this is an update.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to C is LNA. Mr. Reed?
We did meet, uh, tonight, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, a lot of the updates that you saw were from interviews that occurred. And then, um, we discussed almost everything except for item B on the new business agenda. Some more to come.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Uh, moving on to D is Strategic Planning. Mr. Reed?
Strategic Planning will have to be the last meeting.
Okay. Uh, E, uh, the EMS, uh, Building Committee. Do we have a report on that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we did meet. Um, I don't know if I informed council, but we did choose a surveyor, uh, Lewis and Associates, which came in somewhat under budget, uh, which was good. Uh, we have also moved forward to getting an RFQP for a construction manager. We made a decision to go with a CM rather than a GC for particular benefits. The, the, the committee thought it would be a better, uh, fit for this project. So we're in the process of doing that. We are waiting now for the town attorney to do his magic on that. We will, uh, get that out if that hasn't been issued already. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Uh, and last but not least is item F, our first selectman's update. Mr. Kellag?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have a written, uh, copy of, uh, of the dais for you. Uh, I already mentioned, uh, my, my word of gratitude to, uh, Manny Camber. Just a quick, uh, note, I, I found a typo there as I was updating it from seventeen years to eighteen years. It inadvertently ended up saying it's been served for a hundred and eighty-seven years, um, which, no, I'll leave that as it is. It's, yeah. So it, the correct number is eighteen years, over eighteen years, so. Um, a couple of quick updates from the Health Department. Uh, there are two programs that they are moving forward with, uh, as we do, uh, pretty much every year. One is free radon kits that are available for residents on a first come, first served basis. Uh, this is at no cost to the town. It's a great program. We encourage everyone to get their homes tested. Radon, as everyone knows, is a very dangerous, uh, it's natural, but very dangerous, um, uh, odorless gas. And, uh, certainly testing is the right way to stay ahead of that and make sure you don't need to take any, uh, actions. Second, uh, we have a limited number of, uh, flu vaccinations for children available, six months to eighteen years. Uh, again, this is through the vaccine program that, uh, I, I believe was the last meeting, if not, it might have been two meetings prior. That, uh, that, that is part of that program, the Connecticut Vaccine Program. So, uh, we have low cost or reduced cost vaccinations available for children for flu. The Kier River Assistance, uh, Program that was brought, uh, before you, um, was awarded. Uh, we have, it's just under ten thousand. It's like nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and something like that sent under the grant. Um, it is still subject to final federal and state budget approvals, but, um, uh, we did go over that at the last meeting. So I'm glad that we have that, uh, grant. Again, it'll be, um, administered by our Social Services Director, Amy LaChioma. And, uh, last, I wanted to give an update on a grant that was awarded, uh, for the town, uh, which, uh, Ms. Lapelis did allude to. As you, as the council, some of you on council will recall, some of you, uh, were not on council at the time. But there was a, a LOTIP, uh, grant that was approved for the town for the multipurpose trail project. This is a project that would connect the existing Usatonic Valley River Trail and Guantama River Trail, uh, by creating the off-road connection from Maple Drive to Wolf Park. Uh, it was approximately, it was about a one and a half million dollar construction, uh, project, uh, that was, again, approved and is available through Connecticut DOT funds. However, one of the concerns that I had, uh, is that the, the design costs, uh, were still having to be borne by the town. And those were estimated to be two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the time. I identified, working through MetroCog, with a separate grant that would cover eighty percent of the design costs. Uh, I had staff apply for that grant and we were notified that we were awarded it through, this is, again, the program through DEEP. So our application was for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So now the potential is we can get a one point seven million dollar trail project completed for about forty-four thousand dollars in capital. Um, well, uh, you know, again, final numbers, TBD. We're waiting for a grant contract from DEEP, which obviously will be brought to this, uh, this council for its review and approval. At that time, I will ask staff to come and give kind of an overall update of the entire project. So those that weren't involved at last council meetings can be brought up to speed. But I think this would be, uh, this is a good, a good win for the town.
That's phenomenal. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Kellag. Great work.
Thank you.
Mr. Mauer, sure. Just may, uh, go follow the tale of that conversation, uh, just so council is aware. That vast piece was discussed in Board of Finance this evening as well. Board of Finance, uh, was in unanimous agreement that that is a, uh, great step forward for when it does come to council for review.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Uh, anything further? All right.
Nothing.
Moving on, there's no unfinished business. We have now, uh, A through G in new business. Uh, first item of new business is our resolution regarding L.A. Barnaby &amp; Sons' contract for the Wolf Park Picnic Building. Uh, and I ask, uh, for a motion, uh, to approve the following resolution, uh, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellag, for selection of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and associated documents binding between L.A. Barnaby &amp; Sons to replace the roof on the Wolf Park Picnic Building. Uh, is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lapelis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Condon. Uh, as is customary, customary, uh, I will turn the floor over to you, uh, Mr. Kellag for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, you may recall, uh, back when we were doing our capital, uh, project reviews, uh, last budget season, that there were some issues at the Wolf Park Picnic Building, one of which is the roof. There are funds that were allocated at that time in the Capital Reserve Fund, uh, for, uh, this type of, uh, effort, uh, for that building. Ms. E. Oroz from Parks and Rec, who's here this evening, uh, went out and sought some quotes, uh, from a few different vendors. And we have selected, uh, L.A. Barnaby &amp; Sons for that work. Uh, the town attorney also reviewed this, uh, had a couple of, uh, minor changes which are included and including obtaining certificates of insurance and, uh, licensure, et cetera. So we would certainly like to proceed, uh, quickly with this repair project that is an ongoing issue there with a roof that is leaking.
Thank you, Mr. Kellag. Sure, Mr. Reed?
This was also vetted at LNA. Quite a bit of questions, so it, uh, it reached consensus to come to.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any further discussion? Ms. Oroz is present in case we have any subject matter questions for her. All right. Make you feel, I'm trying to make it feel like it was worth your, your trip out here, Ms. Oroz. Uh, all right, um, hearing...
Russell will be very happy tomorrow.
Yeah. All right. Seeing no requests for further discussion and hearing, uh, none of the same, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, that motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to B is the resolution regarding the Connecticut, State of Connecticut Department of Public Preventative Health and Human Services, uh, block grant. Uh, I'm gonna introduce the following resolution and ask that a motion be made to approve, uh, its adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellag, for a selectman of Monroe Town, uh, Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the State of Connecticut Purchase of Service Contract and any associated document of public health pertaining to the Preventative Health and Human Service Block Grant Contract for the High Blood Pressure Control Program. May I have a motion to, uh, approve the adoption of the resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Martin. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer.
Second.
Uh, for discussion, I'll turn the floor over to you. Mr. Kellag?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a grant that we, uh, has come up every year, so it's probably familiar to you. Uh, we've been utilizing this grant last couple of years for the, um, High Blood Pressure, uh, Control Program, which has been very well received in our community. Provides us about forty-five hundred dollars worth of funds that primarily goes to offset the salary costs of our public health nurse. Also keeps us compliant with one of the essential health services required by the state, uh, Health Department. This funding is simply, you know, it's, it's out there, available for the asking as long as we, uh, as long as we ask for it and we provide the service. And we're certainly looking to continue to do that. Uh, again, our town attorneys look at the, um, typical lengthy contract of the State of Connecticut, which is more or less boilerplate for them. But, um, he's rendered his opinion as well, which you have in front of you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kellag. Any further discussion? Mr. Reed?
This had also, Mr. Chairman, uh, passed the roll.
Great. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, show of hands and aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, and against? Hearing and seeing nobody against, that motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to item C of new business is the resolution regarding an MOU with the Southwestern Regional Communications Center. I'll introduce the following resolution and ask that a motion be made thereafter to, uh, approve its adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellag, for selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the memo of understanding and the associated documents binding between the Southwestern Regional Communications Center, comma, Inc., for utilization of the public safety data network located at the police department. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lapelis. Second. Second by Mr. Rooney.
Second.
For discussion. Uh, again, Mr. Kellag, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, so the, um, the Southwestern Regional Communications Center, uh, which also known as CEMED, uh, is, uh, the agency that is utilized for a couple of different functions in town. And one of them is the dispatching of our fire, uh, and EMS departments. Uh, so for that, they need connection into our radio network. Uh, one of the things that, uh, what they would like to do, what they have approached, uh, my office is, uh, transitioning an existing T-one communications line, uh, to connection to the State of Connecticut's Public Safety Data Network, uh, which is a very, uh, modern, robust, uh, network. And by doing this, not only would it provide, uh, a more stable, um, better, better service, it also would eliminate roughly four thousand dollar cost of the existing T-one line, which we do pay for. And we would be able to, uh, terminate once the stable connection was established through the PSDN. Um, I've, uh, kind of further negotiated, revised the MOU after speaking with, uh, our IT Director, our Police Chief, and, uh, of course, uh, Attorney Hayden, who's also, uh, provided his memo of opinion in this regard.
Thank you, Mr. Kellag. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment?
Yes, Mr. Condon.
Mr. Kellag, is this to CEMED in Shelton, their new office?
Say it again, Mr. Condon.
Is this connection to the CEMED new office in Shelton or the hospital?
Hospital or new office in Shelton?
So, uh, I'm not sure exactly where CEMED is and their migration, but, uh, yes, this would connect, uh, to the, um, I mean, they're, they're gonna be dispatching, uh, they're relocating to offices in Shelton. And, uh, certainly that, uh, it would be part of, I think this is actually part of that project. So, uh, it would absolutely be part of their, their new, their new, uh, structure, technological structure.
Thank you. I just didn't want to do it twice.
Oh, no, no, no.
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, show of hands or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anybody against? All right. Seeing and hearing nobody against, that motion carries eight to zero. Um, we're gonna just skip over the, uh, item E for a moment and, uh, move into the salaries that we added to the agenda as F.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure.
Skipping both items D and E?
Thank you. Yes, for the time being. Um, but thank you, Mr. Mauer, for correcting me. Item F is the salary for the tax collector. We heard the opinion of, uh, Mr. Hayden. So I just want to open this up by a discussion just to, uh, before we, uh, come to the floor with a motion. Do we know, can we just restate what the current tax collector's salary is, Mr. Kellag, if you know?
Fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Okay. And, um, do we know when Mr. Camber received his last, uh, adjustment? Do we know when that was?
That I am not aware of off the top of my head. I don't know if Mr. Bonowski might, uh, sorry.
Um, off the top, I think it was like two thousand fourteen.
Okay. That's what I, that's what I recall.
It's definitely been, it hasn't been the last couple of years that I'm, that I can recall.
Um, and in that regard, do you, does your office have any, um, suggestions or recommendations for the council to consider before it makes a motion?
Uh, the consideration that I would just, uh, relate to you is that, uh, commensurate with some of the collective bargaining agreements, the general wage increase for non-union staff has been two percent. So, uh, if you were to entertain, uh, a modification, I would, I would recommend that it be in that realm.
Okay.
Which, uh...
So approximately sixty thousand?
That would, yeah. I mean, that's within a few dollars of sixty thousand dollars.
All right. Before, since I'm opening the floor to, uh, to discussion, before a motion, anybody else want to make any comments in advance of any motions?
I just want to make sure that I understand correctly that, uh, being that this term would be ending twenty nineteen, um, this actually would be up for discussion for the twenty twenty, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget? Or not till the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget? As that it would, the term would be ending within this budget season?
My understanding is that you can, you can modify it for the remainder of this term. But if you wanted to subsequently change it again, it would have, it could not take effect until after the next election.
But it could be, which would allow it to still be discussed as part of the...
Correct.
This upcoming budget discussion.
Which would not...
It just wouldn't take effect until November?
July first.
Well, July.
Right. If you're talking about next year's budget, I mean...
Right. Okay. Any other preliminary discussion? All right. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, set the salary for the tax collector at sixty thousand dollars per year. Obviously, it would be adjusted, um, within the year for the, based upon the, uh, time of service. There'll be a two percent increase of rock, approximately. There'll be a two percent increase of approximate-
No move.
Okay, is my motion, and Ms. LaPelle, are you seconding my motion?
Yes, I was.
Okay. So Ms. LaPelle is seconding the motion, discussion. I'll just indicate that it's my, was my recollection, and thank you for corroborating that, is that Mr. Canberra has not received a raise in some time. I'm assuming if we do the research, we'll see that it's a severely underpaid position vis-à-vis our, our neighboring towns, be that as it may. I think that a two percent increase being commensurate with the union increases is probably still making that position underpaid, but within reason, and won't affect our, our budget too much. I would assume that we have the ability to make that adjustment within the budget.
I believe we can, we can address that through either contingency or other, other potential transfer in the future that cover the delta.
Okay.
It's a small number.
All right, any further discussion? None? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, aye, or show of hands?
Aye.
Okay, anybody against? That motion carries eight to zero. All right, on to G is the treasurer's salary stipend or compensation. Again, we'll just open, before we ask for a motion, if any, just the current treasurer compensation, last raise, if we know roughly.
So the current is ten thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. I don't recall when this was last adjusted either, it hasn't been, well, certainly the same timeframe, not, yeah, not in the last several years.
I thought we just did-
My recollection was that we did it last cycle.
This cycle.
Yeah. My recollection was we just had done this last cycle.
Maybe I'm mistaken.
I didn't mean to-
Dead left, I can't-
Certainly could have, I certainly could have asked you the question before tonight, so I apologize.
Do you want to-
I believe the last time elected officials were up was the crisis year, a year, a year back, and then everybody got shelved that year, all raises for elected officials that year.
So you think it goes back to two thousand fourteen as well?
I think, I think it was actually two thousand fifteen was the year they-
Yeah, I mean, cause two thousand seventeen is when it would have looked, yeah.
Everything got shelved, yeah. That was the crisis year, the, when the governor's budget came out.
Okay. Any further discussion before we ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, can you repeat that? What was the answer on that?
The answer was, the belief is that, that, that compensation was also, has not been adjusted since two thousand fourteen, fifteen.
Thank you.
A two percent increase would take that to eleven thousand, fifty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. So eleven thousand, fifty-six would be a two percent increase if it were to be considered.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment?
Sure. Mr. Condon.
Their selectmen, has there been a market analysis? Is that even possible in this case?
Has the selectmen provided or done a market analysis?
Correct.
So what are the neighboring towns paying that position? Is that the equivalent of a market analysis?
Correct, that's the gist of my comment, you're correct.
I think it would be difficult to find a similar position that has a elected kind of part, I mean, it's not even part time, it's a stipend for-
I'm going to make a motion for, any further discussion?
Do you know, I don't recall us doing one of that.
Any further discussion?
The numbers would be-
All right, I'm going to make a motion to also propose that that compensation be also adjusted upwards two percent to eleven thousand, fifty-six dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. LaPelle. Again, it hasn't been considered since two thousand fourteen, so we get it for the tax collector, so I think it makes sense to also increase this position by a like amount.
And it's a stipend, correct?
It's, it's compensation, yes.
Thank you.
I'm not sure we did the rest. We didn't, I just checked.
We did not?
We did not. It was an administrative position underneath the tax collector that I think we all thinking of.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? No? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, show of hands, or aye.
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 Okay, any against? All right, seeing none against, that carries eight to zero. Thank you very much. We're going back to D, which is the resolution pursuant to Public Act eighteen dash twelve regarding the amendment of the municipal charters for the purpose of modifying the budget adoption dates. You have before you a memo from Mr. Kellogg, addressed to the chairman, myself, as chairman of town council, and copied to the board of finance chairman, Ms. DiMangio's, board of education chairman, Ms. Lane, and the superintendent, Mr. Zamary, with the selectmen's suggestions, and I also just want to take the opportunity to hand out copy of the charter provision that I printed for this evening, the public act itself, the proposed resolution. My proposed resolution, the first copy shows the current chapter eight, as it's presently situated in the budget, with highlights on the, the dates that can be considered by this body for amendment this evening, and the second copy just with blanks so that we could work through, we use it as a working copy to create a final resolution for consideration should we consider to do that, put penciling in the dates. So I think it's appropriate, based upon the substance of this discussion, to have a discussion-
Absolutely.
-before we ask for a motion. So with that, since you've presented the council with a memo, Mr. Kellogg, I'll turn the floor over to you to explain your suggestions. I will preface the conversation by saying that when this was brought to my attention, you know, I thought, I thought it was, and I still think it is, and I'll give my full opinion on this after the selectmen gives us his suggestions. I do think this is a, a very, an excellent opportunity for the town as a whole, and for this body to consider this statute, which is specifically aimed and limited at what I, what I feel is assisting the communities to adjust their timelines without having to consider the entire charter opening process, which is a scary proposition for some, and others have been waiting to dive into that for years, I understand, but, you know, just based upon the last few budget cycles, we all know the struggles we've gone through with processing information, to say the least, and I think it provides us with a good opportunity to ensure that we have as much information as possible so that we can have an accurate budget go out to the, to community and give the community as much time as possible to consider it. But with that, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Kellogg, and then we'll have a fruitful discussion, I'm sure.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll preface with, I, I did distribute earlier, a couple of weeks ago, the memo the end of, the end of the year, December thirty-first, just advising the council of this ability, and that I, I thought it was worthy of further review. I just want to highlight some of the, you know, as you alluded to, I mean, one of the things I think we are challenged with in our current budget process is being very early compared to other communities in putting forth a final budget product, and that requires us to make certain assumptions that, obviously, we're not always going to have perfect information, but I think the least, the more information we have that is more refined, and the less we are relying on assumptions, the better products we can together collaboratively put, put before the voters. One of the things certainly is the state's budget and what we would anticipate in state aid. The governor's budget typically comes out in, typically around the second, first or second week of February, depending upon where the calendar falls. This year, it's going to actually be two, two weeks after that, the twentieth of February. So certainly, while that is just the first step in the process, and it still needs to go through the legislature, I think that the ability to have more time for our entire community to understand where we think the state is going, not just from governor's perspective, but the entire legislature, the more information we have, the better. So the further along that process is will help us. Of significant impact is medical insurance, medical and dental insurance rates. We will not have that until mid-April, that is when those come out, so by default, we're always making an assumption at referendum time currently. So we would have, we would expect to have firm dates in mid-April, firm, I'm sorry, rates in mid-April. Another item is refining of the grant list. Well, the grant list is certainly, it's, it's finalized earlier on, however, there is the Board of Assessment Appeals process. And the farther along that goes, again, the less assumptions we have to make in terms of where those appeals are going to come out and how that will impact the final grant list. Typically, that is done by the end of March, however, it is not uncommon that to get extensions for one reason or the other to the end of April. Our assessor feels that typically by end of April, you have a much better handle on where those appeals may lie. Now, I will say that things can happen in revale years, so next year at this time, that issue might actually be further down, there may actually be even more time for Board of Assessment Appeals because it's a revale year, but in a typical year, end of April is a, is a more comfortable timeframe to be in. So with that said, and after having spoken further with our town attorney, our finance department, the assessor, the registrar of voters, tax collector, town clerk, I have prepared before you tonight a proposal to consider. I think it, it, it may go without saying, but I do want to say very clearly on the record that, as you know, the statute does not allow us to change the process, just the dates, so the referendum itself is not up for consideration. I want to be really clear that I would have no intentions of making it, putting it out as consideration. So we are not talking about the referendum itself strictly, the dates around it. So my proposal is to leave the dates up to and including the date my budget is due to this council, and extend the remaining dates out to, would ultimately be a one-month push out for the referendum, and I'll go through that in more detail. What I think that will afford is by, by my delivering the budget at the same timeframe, it allows for an additional month for the public to participate in the budget process. It certainly also allows both the council and the board of finance to have, have it for a longer period of time as well. It allows for greater flexibility in scheduling of the budget meetings, less pressure on timeframes, even things as weather events that can cause havoc in the wintertime with our budget schedule, allows us for more time to put in, to, to have those capital budget discussions, which we often, often seem to be under the gun to get in, in time. And then, of course, the final budget product being presented, again, based on more due diligence and fewer assumptions, as I went through earlier. So my recommendation, as I outlined in the bottom of the memo, is that the town council date to forward its budget proposed to Board of Finance be changed from February twenty-eighth to March fifteenth. That would allow the council to have, instead of twenty days, to have the budget thirty-five or thirty-six, depending upon a leap year, thirty-five or thirty-six days. Next, the board of finance changing the date that their product is due back to my office from March twenty-first to April twentieth. They currently, the board of finance currently has the budget fully within their realm, of course, they, they tend to work on it throughout the entire process, but they currently have it for twenty-one or twenty-two days, depending upon a leap year. This would allow them thirty-six days. The annual budget referendum, I am, I am proposing a change from the first Tuesday in April to the first Tuesday in May. We would certainly leave all the, the other dates alone, so we would still allow anywhere from eleven to seventeen days for the final budget to be published for the voters. That would not change, and of course, that window is based upon when the first Tuesday falls in any given year. One thing I obviously want to be cognizant of is our ability to get in, allow, allowance for sufficient votes and time to get tax bills out. With that in mind, I am recommending that the date of the second referendum, if required, be changed from three weeks from the first referendum to two weeks from the first referendum. That window appears to be in there primarily to allow more time to hold the charter-required meeting, that the first selectman is required to call with the town council, board of finance, and board of ed. My feeling is that that can certainly still be done with a two-week timeframe, that there's, there's no need to have that additional week. By doing that, and then continuing with all subsequent referendums being two weeks apart, as they currently are, allows us to get in three referendum by early June, and even up to a fourth by June eighteenth, which would still be within a window to get tax bills out on time. I've provided you with a sample calendar, although the, the changes would apply going forward until they were subsequently altered again, so it would apply for all future years. I've given you a sample two thousand nineteen calendar, which has the current dates in yellow, the future, the proposed dates in green, and that kind of flows out to show you where, where these things would, would end up. Getting up to, ability to do up to four referenda by the end of June, it seemed to be acceptable, given in the last eleven years, we have passed the referendum in three or less votes. I did review this earlier with the board of finance and received unanimous consensus that they, they've concurred that they believe this proposal is, is good. And again, I have, although I don't think I mentioned it in my memo, I have discussed this with the superintendent schools and the chairman of the board of ed, and there were, you know, the, the concept of moving the referendum route out was one that they supported as well. I know there was a discussion earlier about absentee ballots. I had a conversation with the town clerk, and that concern was not raised. I think, given there's two weeks in between all the other subsequent votes, it would seem that two weeks should be sufficient in the, between the first and the second as well. Yep. So that said, I thank you again for your consideration and-
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Condon.
I'd like to propose adoption of the plan as written. The memo dated January fourteen, two thousand nineteen, has stipulated with the change of dates, especially since it has no adverse charter impact, and it gives us an opportunity to get more information, have a cleaner budget, and allow the public to participate votes as written.
All right. Mr. Condon, I'm just going to hold that just for a moment. This has to be done by resolution. I want to make sure that, doing something of this magnitude, that we do it procedurally proper, so I'm just going to note for the record that, that you're endorsing the first selectmen's proposal as printed, but if you would just, stealing, stealing Mr., the first selectmen's terminology, if you would indulge me with just waiting to move this formally forward, I just really want to make sure that all members of council have an opportunity to be heard.
Absolutely.
Okay? All right.
Yes, please.
And anybody else, discussion?
Yeah, can I, can I comment?
Sure. Ms. LaPelle.
With, with all my years on the council, this should be an excellent improvement because it used to be such pressure, especially for the selectmen, after we did his town council, he had to do it, and this may be excellent, so I, I wholeheartedly endorse it also.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Martin.
Yeah, I, I'm intrigued by these changes because we have, we have all strong points. The two issues that you moderately addressed are still a concern to me. One is the point that Mr. Kirsch made about teacher contracts, new hiring, whether this is an issue with the time of students. And the other would be- And the other would be the, with the absentee ballots. You indicated that, that was said that the, there wouldn't be a problem, but in the past, we'd have been told that there was a problem turning it around so quickly. So how do we address those?
Well, as I, as I stated earlier, I did discuss this with the superintendent, and that concern was not, was not raised. He was in favor of, of moving the, the date out. I'm not sure I understand the concern relative to the absentee ballots, the exact same timeframe, the lead time between the final budget going to the voters, and the first referendum is the same.
I don't, I don't believe the concern had always been the first one, it was any additional ones after that.
So, but if all subsequent ones are two weeks apart, if you can do it between the second and the third, and the third and the fourth, and et cetera, I don't know why you can't do it between the first and the second.
Okay.
In that timeframe. Again, I didn't discuss it specifically with the town, with the town clerk, but I did have a review this, and she did not raise any, any concerns.
Mr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman, I was present for the discussion for this for Board of Finance in my capacity as liaison from council to finance. While they were on board with this idea, there were a couple of concerns raised, some of which we're already discussing. The one with regards to absentee ballots, it was brought up that the reason, the recollected reason why there was the three-week period in April was actually because of the week of the school break, of the vacation, which is why that was three weeks instead of two weeks. So at least from the Board of Finance perspective, they were not concerned with the two-week period there. One thing that was raised by Board of Finance was whether we would want to consider pushing those initial dates in January, an extra week as well, in order to give the department heads an ability to get their budgets in without the conflicts of the holiday. That was discussed, the selectmen addressed those concerns, and the Board of Finance was satisfied with the answer, but it was something that was raised. My major concern lies with, while I understand the superintendent has talked to this matter, that the Board of Education has not had a chance to discuss this as a board, and I, for one, would like to know the Board of Education's view. While I, in general, am in support of this idea, the concerns raised by Mr. Kirsch, both here and at the Board of Finance, as well as the effect that this could have on the Board of Education, I feel it would be prudent of us to push this for one meeting and allow the Board of Education the chance to discuss this at their meeting, so that we can have some feedback from them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Kellah, do you want to respond to Mr. Martin anyway, relative to your, just more color as to your conversations potentially with Ms. Lane and/or Mr. Zamory regarding the impact, if any?
All I can say is, the conversations I had with them, there was no concerns or no request that they deliberate upon it. There was simply an endorsement of the idea that, and I, I had referenced that, the thought process was putting that first, getting that first referendum out a month to allow additional time, and that was well received. So that's, that's all I can say at this point.
Ms. Martin.
Mr. Kellah, did, did they have no concern about bringing it to their Board of Ed, like you're bringing it to us to discuss? That wasn't brought up?
It wasn't raised as a concern of theirs, no.
Okay. I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Anybody else have any opinions? Is there any concern with us not moving forward on this this evening and making sure the Board of Ed has had the opportunity to discuss this at their next meeting?
I think that would be a good idea.
I agree that that would be, I think that's prudent.
I've thought on that, if we were trying to pull it back, if we were trying to push it back, I would say, yeah, just get them another month. If they want to be done with theirs a month early, they can. If they've expressed no interest or no concern, then I don't see the problem.
We don't know that all of the Board of Education members have even been approached about this idea, to know that it's a possibility.
Mr. Kellah, is, is there a logistical problem at all in just letting this sit, you know, having us digest it till the next meeting?
I, well, I guess my concern is that if you're gonna wait for Board of Education, you are gonna get very, you're gonna get, you would have to immediately schedule your, you'd have to schedule your dates, assuming that it wasn't going to potentially proceed because you're, you're gonna run out of time if, if you don't change your, because you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to deliberate until your February 11th meeting if you're looking for Board of Ed.
Yeah, I, I think the concern, the concern that we have is the other item on the agenda left for discussion is getting a general consensus as to the council's availability, and, you know, just as I do every year, since I've been chair, kind of wanting to have an overall discussion regarding our, our intent with our budget meetings. And that was on the schedule, that was on our agenda for that purpose. And to be frank, I was under the presumption that this was such a great idea that we could have more time to discuss the greater period of time we have to schedule those meetings. We would be very condensed, again, if, if we don't move forward with this, this evening. Mr. O'Rourke.
I just want to add that with the superintendent weighing in on it, and the Board of Ed chair weighing in on it, I would be comfortable moving forward with this this evening.
And so would I be.
As would I, it just gives them more latitude, not less. If they're already prepared for the current scenario, they should have no problems adopting it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Martin.
In response to Mr. Condon's comment, the, the concern isn't their preparation of the budget. The concern is the, or at least the major concern that I would have is the one raised by Mr. Kirsch earlier, and that if we don't get our budget passed at an early enough time, we won't be able to tender offers to teachers, offer new positions at an early enough time because we will not have those date, we will not have that as an approved budgetary item. I, I don't, I personally, if I'm correct, there is a Board of Education meeting in one week on the 21st.
Maybe I put the calendar wrong.
And we would have a meeting on the 28th of this month, which would allow us to also schedule our, to both deal with this motion and schedule our meetings on the 28th of this month without affecting any dates because the budget's not due to us until February 8th.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't see anything on the 21st initially, and that was because it is a holiday, so they're meeting on the 22nd.
22nd, I'm sorry.
So I...
All right, so let's do this.
You're correct.
Sure, Mr. O'Rourke.
With the points that you're raising, us two heads that we were talking about here with regards to the chairman of the Board of Ed and the superintendent, they don't seem to be raising this issue.
With all due respect to both of them, it just may not be an issue that they were made, they were made aware of.
So the superintendent would not be made aware of tendering teachers' contract on a timely basis?
Well, all I'm, all I'm saying is this is a, an issue that was raised by one of our constituents. It's an issue that was, if you may let me finish, it's an issue that was brought up in the, as an issue that was brought up in the procedure when this was first moved back to April, as this being one of the reasons. I think it would be prudent, I'm not saying necess, I'm not saying necessary, I think it would be prudent to have the Board of Education as a whole weigh in on it, especially since it will not affect our ability to schedule.
Any further discussion? I, I would just say, the memo did go to Ms. Lane as the chairman, who does establish, obviously, in very close cooperation with the superintendent and his staff, their agenda. They obviously have the, they have the ability to weigh in on the very detailed recommendations. The first selectman has represented that. He's had conversations with both Mr. Zamory as the superintendent and Ms. Lane as the chair, and if there was a concern in their respective opinions, they would have let it be known. They have not done that. They also could have called a special meeting if, to act upon that concern in a timely fashion, knowing it was on our agenda. So I think absent that, I, I don't know, while it may be prudent, we also don't know if they even want to have their body consider it, nor do they have to have their body consider it. It doesn't have to be on their agenda. So with that being said, I think it's right to move forward, but if it's as a consensus, if we want to give them more time, I, I don't object either way. But I, I think we are prepared to move forward. I think the proper notice has been given, and I think if there was a real concern, then they would have addressed it.
With all due respect, that memo went out today.
Do you want to take a short recess?
Sure. Take a recess. Five minutes. Jack. The memo went out today, but the discussion didn't happen today.
No, but the calendar with the dates did.
Yeah, but he had discussions over it. I don't care either way, it doesn't matter to me. We're just prolonging business because never know what's going to happen.
I'm getting paid by the hour.
It doesn't matter to me. It's not gonna have a huge impact the other way, I just, we just table things for...
Well, the two experts that are worried about it, they...
My point is, we're not, I mean, we're potentially might go managing. If someone contacts me and says, "Do you have an issue with any of this?", and then, and I say, "No", and then they turn around and lobby, they go to their board and say, "Well, we want the whole town council to weigh in on it", and it comes back to me.
But if someone contacted you and said, "Do you have an issue on this?", you would, undoubtedly because you have in the past, I don't personally, but, you know, let me, let me call my people.
The lawyer, the lawyer who does come out very often, I probably would say that, as I always did.
But in the past, you have said, you know, "I'll, I'll call my people".
I would call you, I'd hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, you heard a crack in the box.
I'm here.
Growing.
But I told them, I says, you know, you're giving them all the opportunities to stretch. You do grow, grow the boys as big as they need, right? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You talk about...
Oh, yeah, I suppose.
Because he's already feeling better.
Yeah.
I'm with him.
Yeah, it's not like it's been public, boy, I haven't moved my hands yet.
It's a different problem.
Very different problem.
It's difficult.
Could be.
If he calls his dad, my name's Bob, I'm gonna like, "Oh, that's a place doesn't change". Because it's been connected to issue five, right?
Not all posher.
I'm seriously considering going to the car park now. I could lose weight first.
Got one underneath our...
You look great.
Really?
Yeah.
You look great.
Three hundred pounds, two fifty-five. Two eighty-five.
I started at the gym at 294, two six pounds. I just did three hundred. It's gonna be a long one, I'll get on the scale and take a picture by 275, now 275, or something like that.
I may say anything, but it was two forty.
Yeah, that's right. So I just did a whole body makeup of like what I have, right? So I have 211 pounds.
Krispy Kreme's.
211 pounds. I hit no glass of water.
How much?
Two laps. I just, I get two, I got to get one. As I say, right?
Yeah, but that's unsustainable.
Well, it's unsustainable.
What are you, how much are you weighing?
275.
So you're seventy pounds. Yeah, I can buy that up.
I'm a super.
Yeah, I can buy that up. Okay, when you fuck him?
Fuck him.
Well, people under six, they never give a half. Like if, like they give half, if you're over six, they're over. Like I go, I go, you act, you go all the way, I don't go six, two and a quarter. I just say six, two.
Right, so I'll just say five, eleven.
Six, yes.
I got one.
I'd be like, I can say that.
I'm here.
We're on recess, Mrs. Palas.
Hey. Hi. Where's this one? She's, she's in Florida. I did know that.
But she's actually talking to Pat for the last time, and she's going out, like, so I got like the rundown of the little meeting. Oh, it was good.
That round, right.
I came from, we had a little meeting over at the library. Oh, okay. So then I wanted to see how he was going.
That's what we are assessing about.
We, Pat's, that he's bought that maybe, I don't look at the agenda, that somebody purchased a duck, so, yes, one or two.
Frank Duchess, just one.
So he's only one more?
Yep.
Duchess.
How do I change this?
W Duchess.
I don't really know.
Well, with Janagor, I want to be very focused.
Reason why I took my pass.
I already sorted it.
It's like it's not a capability.
All right.
I'm leaving, I'm leaving.
Oh, you know what? Someone else started the show.
The role of Janagor.
Just wait for Mr. O'Rourke, and then we'll go back on the record. Are you ready? All right, is everybody ready to proceed? All right, so we're back on the record. Mr. Kellah, do you have an update for us? We went to recess just to, for you to communicate with the Board of Ed.
Yep, so I was able to reach Dr. Zamory. His feedback in regards to the specific question relative to the hiring of teachers, he said that, that is not an issue. They changed their practice quite some time ago that all offers go out contingent upon budget, and have not had any issues at, at all in this regard. In fact, he mentioned that the delay by one month of the budget referendum would be very advantageous in their, in his assessment because the way the unitiations, start date on negotiations are defined based upon the budget, the budget referendum date, the annual budget reference, referendum date. So because we are so early, we are often the very first community out of the gate without any data from any other communities, we're like, we're the first one out there. So there's no other boards of ed that have been, have, have, have kind of set their, their contracts. That said, I, I was not able to reach Ms. Lane just to get her sense of opinion if she wanted to have her entire board consider it, which is certainly, I'm not opposed to, but I was not able to, to reach her in that regard, so.
Mr. Martin. Thank you very much, Mr. Selectman. I appreciate that effort. That update is, addresses the major concern that I had with even having it go to the Board of Education. So that knowledge makes me far more comfortable. The only question I still raise to this council is the one raised by the Board of Finance as to whether we wish those first two dates to be pushed back. Obviously, that would not be in effect for this year as that has already passed, but if it's something that this council wants to consider in order to give the department heads time outside of the vacation.
I, I would defer to the selectman as to that opinion, that those department heads report to him, and he would know better than anybody else as to what their performance, abilities, or... abilities or detriments would be, so I'll defer to you on that, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, so, you know, I mean, all that, all that potentially does is shifts work from one part of the calendar to another part of the calendar, I mean, there's certainly the value of having more, more actuals for the current fiscal year, that, you know, tends to come out a little bit once, you know, kind of after, you know, while they're in the middle of preparing, and as I'm deliberating with them over the budget, so that, that certainly would be helpful, but, I mean, my intent here was not to give myself an extension, but really to give the community an extension.
All right, any further discussion?
No, I think this is a great plan.
Okay, so, let's just quickly, are there any objections or recommendations to defer in any way from the First Selectman's recommended modification to this charter provision, date-wise?
If I may, the only concern I have left is the April for the second, sorry, never mind, I take that back.
You're drunk.
You're drunk, take that back.
And so, all right, so what I'm going to do is, I'm just going to go through before I make the formal motion, we have Section 2, that date will remain 1-2, correct? Section, I'm sorry, the first part of Section 2, the second part of Section 2 will be 1-9, that remains the same, no change, correct?
Yes.
All right. Section 3, Sub 5 is the same, that's 2-8. Section 4 is now March 15th, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay? Section 5, Finance, date is now 4/20, correct? All right. Section 6, the Annual Budget Referendum will be the first Tuesday in May, correct?
Correct.
All right.
April.
Nope.
No, no, April now.
May now, correct, right.
And the, the subsequent referendums will be two weeks, both the first section, which is Paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, will be two weeks instead of three weeks, and the Paragraph 6 will remain as two weeks.
And I'm assuming we'll get a nice, clean copy of this eventually.
It's going to be super clean, yeah. All right, then those are the only changes, correct? Correct? All right, so I'm going to introduce a resolution, introduce the following resolution and ask that a motion be made to approve and adopt it. The resolution is entitled, "The Monroe Town Council Resolution to Amend Chapter 8 of the Monroe Town Charter Regarding Certain Budget Adoption Dates", I duplicated in Chapter 8, so that's on their printed version, so that's the motion, "Resolution to Amend Charter", "Resolution to Amend Chapter 8 of the Monroe Town Charter Regarding Certain Budget Adoption Dates. Whereas pursuant to Public Act 18-12, Section 1 as an act of the Monroe Town Council, acting as the legislative body within and for the town of Monroe, is authorized to amend the Town Charter for the sole purpose of modifying its budget adoption dates. Now therefore be it resolved that Chapter 8 of the Charter of the Town of Monroe is hereby amended as follows, and I'm going to highlight only those amendments to Chapter 8. First is Section 4, last sentence shall read, "Not later than March 15th of each year, the Council shall forward the budget as proposed by the Town Council to the Board of Finance." Chapter, I'm sorry, Article 5, the last sentence shall be amended to read, "The Board shall prepare its final proposed annual budget and shall deliver the same to the First Selectman, not later than April 20th of each year." Further, Article 6, entitled, "Publication of Referendum", Paragraph 4, first sentence shall read, "The annual budget referendum shall be held on the first Tuesday in May of each year." And further, Article 6, also still entitled, "Publication of Referendum", Paragraph 5, the third sentence shall be amended to read, "The First Selectman shall thereupon call for a second annual budget referendum to be held two weeks from the date of the first annual budget referendum." And there are no further amended dates regarding Chapter 8, is that correct? Yes? All right. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Mauer, second, by Mr. Rooney. We've had plenty of discussion previous to the introduction of the motion, but the floor remains open for further discussion. Seeing none and hearing none from my friends on the telephone, I'm going to call for a vote, all those in favor, by a show of hands, or aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And against, hearing and seeing nobody against, that motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk, I'll give you my, unless you, I'll give you my marked-up copy. No one, said nobody ever, but that's okay. All right, and then, moving on to E, so the budget meeting schedule for this evening's purposes, I'm just throwing it out there fairly to consider any conflicts you may have regarding any budget meeting dates. I do anticipate speaking with Mr. Manjos this week to confirm that he has no intention of changing what we've been doing in the past regarding joint meetings with the same type of schedule, but again, I want to throw it out to the members of Council, if anybody has any suggestions or wants to do anything any differently, please bring it to my attention in advance, so that we can propose a schedule for our budget deliberation sessions. I think we've been doing a really good job the last three or four years of, you know, having very thorough discussions, but also limiting the inconvenience to the department head, if not necessary. So, what we will do is, we'll schedule department head meetings, only if we really think as a council that we need to hear from them, and we'll wait for the budget to come out. Preliminary, we'll set aside some evenings for meetings, and I'll run those by you, so that we can make sure there are no conflicts, but we'll assume we won't need any more than probably two meetings with department heads for deliberations, we'll have that one or two joint meetings with Board of Finance, and then as many as needed to have our own meetings regarding adjustments. That's how I propose to do it. Any suggestions now? Obviously, this will remain on the next agenda for discussion, all right.
Given my vacation time. Is that February vacation?
I think that we have just a long weekend in February. Vacation is few and far between, vacation days these days, but, all right. Seeing nothing further on new business, second, public participation, Mr. Kirsch.
Steve Kirsch, 35, Avenue 8, thank you, Mr. Chairman, two things, will there be a new publication of the Charter, given these changes, and so, how or when does that take place?
What do you mean by publication? Obviously, we amended it, so we'll have to publish the amended provision of the Charter, but.
Do we publish a whole new booklet, or?
I think we have to print it, too, don't we?
I thought that's what you were getting at, the whole new booklet, so the answer will be yes, the question is, do we print a new booklet, or can we just save money and put an insert in there, so amended?
Okay, I just wondered, I'm not sure that you're prepared to answer the question tonight, but.
Yes, of course. We will not be in the business of disseminating false Charter booklets in the future.
One other comment, I'd like to thank the First Selectman for making this document available to the public and in color, and allowing, you know, makes it very easy to follow along, and I would also like to thank him for getting ahold of the Superintendent and getting that answer, that I greatly appreciate.
Thank you for your participation, anybody else?
Yeah, can I just thank the Selectmen for allowing Mr. Condon and I to do a photo, a phone conference, neither one of us, I guess, could make the meeting.
You're thanking the Selectmen, or you're thanking your Chairman of Council?
I'm thanking the chairman.
All right.
I was going to, I'd like to thank you.
I know I was asking for, I know I was asking for too much, but that wasn't, that comment is very hurtful to me. Although, I didn't even dial your call, I don't know how to do that, so thank you for that, all right.
The right side of the desk would like to not thank you. It's really just been a bad idea.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Reed, second, Mr. Mauer, all those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, I'm hanging up now.
Aye, oye, I'm not sure. Oye.
Just hang up, just hang up.